Do we keep our spare change?
Okay, it's twelve o'clock, so we'll call this special meeting of Starbuck City Council to order on April twenty ninth at twelve P. M. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Would you call the roll, please, Joan?
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Councilor Gorder.
Here.
Councilor Tafe.
Here.
Councilor Bockel.
Yo.
Councilor Hanson.
Okay. Okay, we have three items on the agenda today, and the first is to approve the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the agenda as presented, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The first item on the agenda is the multi-use path on the west side of Highway twenty-nine. Some of the history of that path is we've probably been considering it for probably four years now, and we've worked quite a bit with Mendat, not quite a bit, a lot with Mendat, and with our city engineers, and as you may know, Mendat has given us a limited use permit for the path, and the city engineers have engineered the project and put it out for bids, and we received three bids on the project, and the completion date is for the end of June. And I guess I just want to announce that funding for the project, it came in, the total cost of the project, looking at the lowest bid submitted, which was by Ferguson Brothers, the total cost of the project, including engineering costs, came to eighty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. We did some negotiation with Widdsith, and they reduced their engineering costs substantially. We've also worked with the Pope County HRA, EDA, and their board is committed to funding up to fifty thousand dollars of the project. We've also worked with the landowners along that route, and at least Beachside and the property owners, and they've committed to thirty thousand dollars of that project. So, the thirty thousand would be split into three payments, and this is by Derek and Amanda Blum have committed to this. There'd be a ten thousand dollar payment at the completion of the project, ten thousand by January fifth of twenty twenty-two, and ten thousand by the end of twenty twenty-two. So, with that, we are, I think, ready to vote, whether to accept the low bid on the project and to move forward with construction. So, I don't know if the council has any questions on the project. It is all in Mendat right-of-way and does not involve any private property or anything. Does anyone have any questions? Welcome, Jill. Can Mark Jill as president? So.
Are you taking questions or no?
Huh?
Are you taking questions or no?
Well, we, yeah, we-
Because you said limited.
Use permit.
Use, what's that mean?
Just means that it's a, I guess you could compare it to a conditional use permit. The limited use is that we are getting limited use of their right-of-way, you know, and as set forth in the engineering plan and so forth, so.
So, this path will be okay for four-wheelers and golf carts, or bikes only?
It is a multi-use path for pedestrians, bicycles, and golf carts or whatever, you know.
As you know, I drive the beach today.
Yeah.
And I don't want a trailer in my four-wheeler there.
Yeah.
I want a path that goes.
Yeah, yeah. And you'll be able to do that, and that's one of the reasons why we've pursued this path for the four years, like I said, is to provide people with a legal and safe way to get around with the increased use of golf carts and so forth in the city, and also to provide access to people on the west side of Highway twenty-nine to be able to get around uptown and to the business establishments like the Water's Edge and so forth, and so that was a consideration, and so, I don't know if I answered your question.
I thought you were talking about the-
And I should point out again, I maybe mentioned it before, but Mendat and the negotiations we had with Mendat insisted on three things. One was better education, which the city has revised its golf cart ordinance and provided a map for everybody who gets a permit, and the ordinance is posted on the website. So, we're making a real effort to educate people about what they, where they can go and where they can't go and so forth. So, the second thing Mendat wanted was better signage, and we will be posting better signs around, you know, around the golf cart paths and so forth. And the third thing that they insisted on was better enforcement. So now that if we have better education, it's in our ordinance, the ordinance provides for civil penalties for not following the rules, and they can lose their permit or be fined, you know, in administrative process, so. So that's the kind of things that have gone into the project and so forth, so, yeah, but-
I'll give the minute.
Okay, so. Any discussion or questions from the council, or if not, entertain a motion to accept the Ferguson bid to construct the multi-use path, so.
I entertain that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Gorder, I mean, excuse me, Councilwoman Bockel to approve the Ferguson bid of sixty thousand, what was it, thirty-three dollars and ninety cents for the construction of the path, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson, and is there any further discussion? I guess I just make one more comment that I neglected to mention is, is that our primary concern is safety for everybody, and the city is looking into having warning lights at the official crossings, which would be solar-powered, push-button operated. If somebody's crossing the road, the highway, they could push the button and the warning lights would flash so that vehicular traffic would be notified that somebody's going to cross the road or attempting to cross the road, so. That's an expense that the city would have to cover. Mendat does not have any grants or would not cover it, so, but we're looking into that, and hopefully that'll be part of the project and in its construction phase, so.
Was Mendat okay with us doing something like that here?
Well, that's what, we've discussed it with them in the past, and like I said, they wouldn't fund it or they didn't have any grant money to do it, but I, I'm pretty sure that they are going to be okay with it, but Widdsith is working with Mendat on approval for that or any concerns that they have, so.
But I would think that we would really want that.
Yeah.
Traffic does roll, even though there is a forty mile an hour speed limit, there are a lot of kids at the beach, and there is activity there, and I think that would be pretty important to try to get that accomplished.
Yeah. Okay.
Having heard that, I would, oh yeah, you did make the motion to discuss-
We have a, we have a motion by Councilwoman Bockel, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. If there's no further discussion, I would ask all in favor. What?
More to the point, you put the lights so that golf carts come, you can see that there's traffic on the road, and they should report, protect me a better idea. Just like, there's traffic coming, don't-
Well, I've-
You push the button, it just go, without hooking.
Mm-hmm.
I think it'd be hard to get a sensor to track the car, but it's coming.
No, we've got sensors to tell you how fast you're going.
Well, coming from either direction, you can see for a long ways, and if, you know, if motor-
I've got to stop a week for you.
It would be a good idea, yeah.
Is there a crosswalk included in that, Gary?
Yeah, there'll be official crosswalks from Mendat. You know, they've approved a crosswalk at the north end of the north parking lot to the beach and the, the north end of the south parking lot, by the Water's Edge, yeah. So Mendat has approved those two crossings across their state highway, and, yeah.
But that's for pedestrians, right?
I can't hear you.
A crosswalk is that traffic will stop for pedestrians and bicycles.
But there won't be any golf carts crossing if that doesn't-
I'm not sure what the point is, or what you're getting at.
The cross on the twenty-eight with the crosswalk's going to go, that's not happening because they can't travel between the beach, they have to cross down by the-
Golf carts don't have right-of-way over anything.
Well, they have to follow a lot of stuff, you know, else.
And if they couldn't, they can just push the button and go, like-
The button's not going to be for them.
Well, then how do they get?
Golf carts, yeah, follow, you wouldn't just like cross the street anyway, they're gonna have to follow the street law, just like a normal vehicle, so. But that, that crosswalk is not going to be meant for golf carts to cross, it's just for pedestrians.
Yeah, it's, it's just an extra safety precaution so that motorists can see that there's somebody crossing. If the golf carts are uptown, traveling on city streets, and they're crossing the state highway, there's not going to be a warning light. They still have to follow the laws for, you know, vehicular traffic, so, yeah. We're, we're just trying to be extra cautious, I guess, so. So. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to discuss the Marina proposals that the, that the city office received as of April sixteenth, and we worked diligently with our legal counsel and so forth to go over the lease agreement. We had special council meetings to amend the lease agreement and so forth, and we put it out for proposals. The city received two proposals, and, and in the advertisement, just point out that the city reserved the right to reject any and all proposals, and also to, you know, you know, also to hold the proposals for sixty days. Our legal counsel also advised the city not to solicit any additional information other than the proposals that were submitted, and, you know, so. Summer is fast approaching, and we want to get something going this year because I think there's going to be a demand, and so, is there any discussion on the council's part? You've seen the proposals and reviewed them, and probably have discussed with different members of the community what their thoughts were and so forth, so. Any questions on, on the proposals or anything?
I guess the question I have is for the Lake Shore Landing proposal. They say that they would have six to eight slips this year. Is there any possibility that there could be more in this year?
Yes, that's, that's, we could do that tomorrow, so to speak, as soon as it's done, to get started, but it's going to take a period of time to get permits done, and so at least six to eight people who are wanting immediate, you mean fishing open this in a couple of weeks, that could get started, so you could have a very small marina to begin with, which does not need permitting, while you're waiting for the permitting to happen and once the DNR, or you can lease, so you could have as many, then, then those, that document will come in.
Okay, yeah, it just said in twenty twenty-two, so I just wanted to verify, so.
No, it was just that, you know, love to be optimistic, but, you know, who knows how long things take, especially when people are still working from home and not in the office, the DNR taking, you know.
Six is the motion to go without the DNR.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or questions from the council, so? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to accept or reject either the proposals or both of them.
At this point, having reviewed both proposals, although somewhat similar, but there are differences, in the best interest of the city, I would like to make a motion that we approve the Minnewaska Marine proposal.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to accept the Minnewaska Marine proposal, being in the best interest of the city of Starbuck, because, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a second by Councilwoman Hanson to accept the Minnewaska Marine proposal, and any further discussion?
I have a question, Steve. Just curious, why is it in the best interest of Starbuck? Do you see Minnewaska to hold it?
Having read both proposals, I, I feel it's in the best interest.
But on what grounds? What, what is the reason?
My opinion.
You gotta have a reason.
But there needs to be a reason. I mean, I'm not arguing with you, I just want to know what is the reason? I think that needs to be articulated.
One, one of the reasons, or the most, the most concerning reason to me is that we're dealing with four, possibly five, different people on one proposal, the other one is only one.
This, two different businesses is what you're dealing with.
Right.
You're dealing with Lake Shore Landing and Minnewaska Marine.
Which lakeside has four parties involved.
Right, and I'm assuming Minnewaska Marine probably has a partner as well? I'm guessing perhaps Denise is a partner in this business?
He's put the proposal in as Minnewaska, and, yeah.
And, and as was ours, Lake Shore.
So I, I-
So that your reasoning is the number of people? Okay, thank you. Jill?
I'd like to just say that, I mean, looking at both proposals, and thank you for both, because I do believe that the city needs more places for boats to dock. I do feel that with the amount of need that we have at this time, that Minnewaska Marine is ready to put it to its maximum this first year, has all the docking and things, since this is something that has really been discussed for the last few years, this isn't new, so that's why I second that motion.
And just out of curiosity-
Yes.
Where does it say in the proposal that he has all the docking?
I, it doesn't say in the proposal, you're correct. But he's been in business, he's, has a history, so I just feel comfortable supporting that.
Okay. So, not a new business, but an old, more established business?
If you will.
Chris?
Uh. No, the council is making a decision based on the best interests of the community, and that's what we're required to do. We listen to people in the community, what they want, and, and who's going to provide it, and, you know, that's where we're coming from.
I'm just asking what-
We don't have to sit and, and name names or say who said what or whatever. We take everything into account, we make a decision in the best interest of the community, and that's what we're doing.
We're making a meditated-
And that's fine, we just wanted to know what were the reasons, that's, that's all we're asking, just curious.
Yeah. We deserve that, to know that.
Okay.
As, as the community does, right? If, if you're doing what's best in the interest of the community, they would like to know what do you see as the reason? So Chris, what do you see as the best interest?
I haven't voted on anything yet, but I wanted to bring up legal side. Are we worried about any legal comeback coming to the city on either of these proposals of being in the park or involvement in any decision-making? Because if there's any legal problems, I don't want the city to have to pay extra legal fees.
No, I mean, we've, we've, Chris, we've consulted with our attorneys throughout this process and have followed their guidance. They wanted to know if they, if we wanted them involved, and I, I said, yes, absolutely, we want you involved. We told them everything and provided everything they've asked for, and so as far as any legal consequences, I think we're in a good position, and our attorneys would back us up on whatever decision we make. And they, and, you know, they, they suggested that we reserve the right to reject any and all proposals, to hold them for sixty days, and to make a decision that's in the best interest of the community in the council's opinion. That's what we're doing. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. If there's no further discussion, I would like to call a, to a vote, and I'd say all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion is carried. I'm sorry?
Roll call vote.
Yeah, we can do a roll, we can do a roll call vote. You want to call the roll and record the vote, Joan?
Sure, Councilor Gorder?
Aye.
Councilor Tafe?
Aye.
Councilor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilor Bockel?
Aye.
And I get a vote, too.
Mayor Swenson?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Last item on the agenda is to discuss the hire of part-time police officers, and I'll just ask Chief Johnson to address the council.
We're going through the process of hiring part-time and full-time employment. We've been, we've had, we've did, put it out for the first two weeks. I'm going to tell you that it's very, we only have two applicants for the full-time position right now, and I've extended it for another two weeks, and that ends next week. There are forty agencies out there hiring right now. It's very, very difficult for anybody in law enforcement, and especially what's going on in the world, and what's, for anybody that, that's even interested in going to law enforcement is, is another challenge. So what, what we do have is that I have two officers that are full-time up in Douglas County Sheriff's Office, very eager to work. They've had five-plus years' experience, very, one of their top, probably the top two deputies in, in that area. Lot of experience with drug recognition, to, they're both on SWAT, so they have a lot of experience. So I would entertain a motion to hire, one of the officer's name is Nathan Larson, and the other officer is Corey Sammons. They're both available to start, they have, they're going to, through SWAT training here next week, but they're available to start the following week after that immediately, besides going through some field training. One of the deputies, Nathan Larson, worked, used to work for Pope County, he's very familiar with all our systems, it'd be a quick transition. The other one is very high-speed, it wouldn't take much, it's basically just getting them used to our record system and showing them, you know, the area, so just to get them to that point. And then with that, just knowing their experience and how it's so difficult to retain part-timers, and with these two coming in, I would highly recommend that we start, instead of eighteen ninety-two an hour, that these guys get paid over twenty-five an hour where they're at now, and to just retain someone that's good and that wants to work, starting at, I want them to start at about twenty-one an hour. I've looked at my budget for part-time, we could give them a thousand hours and we're fine. We have five hundred hours total for the rest of the year to, that are scheduled, and we could go up to a thousand and we'd still be fine at that rate. I just think that it's, it's going to come, we, I mean, we have, just to keep in mind, we have union stuff coming up, and with the things that are going on, people are, you know, eighteen ninety-two, you can almost make that at McDonald's, and for the work that we're doing, and to keep someone that we have, and I know these two people are going to commit it to, to working hard and they're going to help us out, I'd like to just give them that opportunity to at least start at that rate. They're not fresh, like I said, they're fully experienced. Be different if we're looking at someone brand-new. We're not going through the hiring costs, or going through the psych, going through the medical. With all that itself, it's probably covering itself right there for just, just doing that, so.
We wouldn't need any background checks on them?
I've, I've already started backgrounds on them, and basically, when you're in law enforcement and you have prior experience, agencies share information, so it's, makes it a lot more easier for me, so really all I have to do is go back to how long they've worked there, and so it's, it's pretty, makes it a lot faster and a lot easier for us.
Did they approach you or?
They approached me. Yep, I did not expect those two to, to come forward, and they, they're just looking for, they're both- they're just looking for, they're both single, they're getting married, but they're just looking for hours. They just want to work. So they have, there's shifts up there, run a little bit different, but there's a stretch where they have five days on, five days off, and that during that timeframe, they're available to work. One is available to work, which would be like Amber's weekend, and then one would be the other full-timer's weekend. So it actually works out really good because they're both split, so we would have somebody to account on when someone wants some vacation or things come up, like we have this month. They're probably going to help us out a lot in the months. That's going to probably save us a lot just on OT, so.
Actually, you were going to have issues with Erin being gone.
Yep.
During the month of May, and of course Amber's got vacation.
Yep, she's got some vacation, so there'll be, there's going to be about a little timeframe where.
And she's got guards, too, right?
And, yeah, and Ryan's going through Army Reserve training the whole month, yep. So that, there's going to be a week span there where I'm flying solo, so.
So would this help?
Yes, this is going to help out dramatically with those guys, and they're, they want, they want to get going. I mean, they wanted to start today, and I'm like, oh, we got to get approved and.
How soon can you get them on?
They've, if I get approval, they get signed, I mean, approved today, I can have them going. When they come back from SWAT, they would start FTO that week, filter training. That gives me enough that this week, and to get all the backgrounds done, which I don't foresee any problems there. And it's virtually done. I wanted to tell you, it's probably just a couple of calls, and then, yeah, they can be up and running that following Monday.
Do you have a certain number of hours of FTO that they have to comply to?
Yeah, each, each officer, it varies. We normally, a first-time, fresh officer, it's probably going to take a couple of months. These guys are very veterans, so the patrol and the road stuff, I'm not too concerned about. We will definitely, you know, monitor that, but it's more for them. It's just getting rid of the, use of the records, what you do when you arrest somebody, it's all, you know, a whole different process, just getting familiar with the town, how we work, stuff like that. But it, it definitely speeds up things when you can hire someone that's got the experience and they're currently working. A lot of that is handled, so it's, it definitely speeds up the process. But I'm looking for them, maybe a week, maybe two weeks, if that.
For the summer?
Yep, so I mean, it, it'll go quick with them. It just depends how they, they can show, and I'm, and if I feel confident they're good to go, then I just kind of release them from there, so.
Mitch, are you advertising for a full-time officer?
Yeah, we, we're on the post-board website, which is the state website for, for all law enforcement, go to look. Like I said, there's forty to forty-five agencies that are hiring right now. So we're competing with all, I mean, these people, Glenwood's currently hiring. They had, I think they had to do it twice, they had eleven, twelve apps. Pope County tried to hire, they've had to wash two or three rounds, but people are, it's really tough. We used to get fifty to sixty applicants. Like I said, we're, we've been going for three weeks. I only have one that's still in school and another one that used to be a officer somewhere else, but did not currently an officer, but this is not, this is going on everywhere. We have Otter Tail, all these big cities are getting less than ten apps.
Do you think with what's happening all over with policing today, that a lot of your bigger city officers might want to move to rural?
It would be possible, yes, definitely, but then you got to compete with, like I said, surrounding agencies are hiring. You got, it's competing with pay. I don't know anybody that's going to come that's got prior experience that's going to assert it at that rate right now. They're just, and it's just not worth it to them because with, with what's going on now, it's, it's not worth it, so. So, but just to, to give you a heads up, I mean, that's something that, you know, when unions come up, that's going to probably be a discussion on that salary stuff, but in general, in law enforcement, that's something that now we're competing with because now we have so many agencies that are hiring, and these are big agencies that are, can definitely pay a little bit more than we are, that we can afford, so that's just a struggle that we're going to have, so. But it, it could take a while for us to get someone full-time up and running, so. With that, that's, I guess, would be my entertainment for a motion to.
I just wanted to say, Mitch, you know, thank you for your service, and you and your officers, and I know it's difficult times and challenging times for law enforcement, and, and I know places that train police officers are having a lack of students now, and it's just a real problem. And I think we're fortunate to have a couple of experienced officers that are willing to, to fill in and, and work for us during a time when Ryan's going to be gone, and, and, you know, we're losing an officer and, and so forth. So thank you again, and I don't know if there's no more questions. I would entertain a motion to.
I'll, I'll make that motion. We have Mitch offer the part-time position, Nathan Larson and Corey Sammons.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilman Gorder to approve the hire of two part-time officers from Douglas County Sheriff's Office at a rate of twenty-one dollars per hour, and seconded by Councilman Tafe. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I would move.
Good, thanks, Chris. Thank you.
So we have a motion to adjourn, and we are adjourned, so. Thank you.
I apologize for being late.